All right. I apologize in advance, I'm very hoarse. I'm sure you went tested twice though COVID. But I've got the regular virus to fill it up, so I'll muddle through this and be unable to speak on your end, that's okay. All right, so I call for the City Vote Choice Planning Commission meeting. It is Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, 2:00 PM. We're at the Ocean Choice Library, 573 Point Brown Avenue, Ocean Choice, Washington. We will start with the roll call. Commissioner Rick Aron, Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Barr, Commissioner Wallace, Commissioner Rocher.
Here.
Yay, a four on plus. All righty. Before we go to move, no, I won't believe that, I was gonna change the agenda, but I want all school to muddle through it with my no voice. So do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Second.
Second, all in favor? All righty, so what I realized last time is we didn't do it right, the correct job of approving the minutes for the October 24th meeting, so we're gonna have to have two motions. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular City Vote Choice Planning Commission on October 24th, 2023?
Motion.
Second, we got a system call, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, secondly, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City Vote Choice Planning Commission meeting on November 14th, 2023?
Motion.
Mark?
Second.
Carrie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, all righty, before we begin, we're gonna do public comments at the beginning and the end. Um, we will, we have no written public comments, and I will open the floor to an in-person public comments first, anybody in here?
I just want to say congratulations, Derek.
Do you have any comments before we start?
Hi Gary, welcome back. Vita Piera has no comments, thank you.
All righty, new business, um, thank God, Mark said he would do this, because I couldn't walk us through it. Mark, wanna give us a quick update on the walking in by the end of summer?
Yes, so we put together a survey to get out. Sarah assisted, and we got it on social media, we got it on the city's website, I talked to Keith, it's on the library website. She added the link to take the survey to our agenda, I don't know if you noticed that? There's a link, and also, I was able to get it in the Ocean Observer, which should come out this week, which will tell everyone they can take the survey at either the library website or the city website.
Good, how long are we gonna run the survey through January?
Right now, we have it through December 31st, but we can extend that if we choose to do so.
Because there's no big hurry to get to it?
No, so we've asked that people vote for one of each of the near-term, two years or less, medium-term, two to four years, and then long-term, four years or more.
Okay, good.
So we'll see what results we get.
I haven't sent it yet, but we had a citizen give a written input. You get that one?
You forwarded it to me.
Okay, good, so we have one submitted written, and we'll include that and figure out what to do with that when we review. Okay, trail, so, wanna make sure you had that.
Yes, thank you.
All righty, so, no big changes here, but some of you people may not have seen it on page nine. I don't think we've made any changes to the purpose and guiding principles to the updated Ocean Choice Washington zoning and municipal code. With Richard here today, I don't think you've seen this before, but we'll sort of walk through this a little bit. Purposes to recommend actions to the Ocean City Council that identify and correct discrepancies of the current code of the 2020 comprehensive plan, basically bring the current code in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Um, so to use the comprehensive plan as a guide, we'll be willing to update both comprehensive plan and zoning municipal code as required. Then find the current zoning map of the municipal code, we're not sure we're doing that, we're trying. Reflect on the ground realities of historical and recent development ocean shores, maintain and improve the current character and nature of single-family housing districts, sustain and improve the natural beauty, seek opportunities to create more affordable housing, which is right out of the comprehensive plan, enhance the downtown resident business areas to more aesthetically pleasing downtown area, also write for the comprehensive plans, identify areas for resort type and mixed use, and promote sustainable development in accordance with best practical practice. Uh, next page, page 10, is the challenges we've seen. We've been through this a lot, the pyramid zoning has resulted in areas of potentially incompatible mixed uses, uh, residential in the B1, B2, and heavier commercial industrial in the in or near downtown. And you know, the shining example of that is the whole area on the end of Point Brown, off over towards David Point, the whole area back in there, as we still shaking our heads, and that's probably gonna be a a lot by lot line art, where somebody's building protected B2, no residential, where residential has gone in, it'll probably have to stay with the residential, that's the biggest example of where it's gone crazy. The desire for transit lodging development is and has continued to overcome available parcels for future business commercial, lack of available parcels for dedicated larger scale future commercial development, something like a Walmart or a grocery chain, there's very few commercial parcels left in this town that are large enough for somebody like that. Uh, continued growth of wetland encroachment and encumbering of undeveloped parcels, and it potentially diminishing future mitigation buying possibilities. And Thor has brought up, and we're gonna get to it, the outdated parking rules restricting commercial development, we have some pretty archaic parking rules in this town, let's go through that. Page 11, we're using less and less, uh, page 11 basically shows the new proposed zones we're working on. Um, but today, I would like to go to page 13, which we call pivot anyway. So page 13 takes our existing code, and this will begin our discussion for today. We basically had R1, 6B and 6C, and that's what we're gonna probably vote on at the end of the meeting today, is the 6B and the 6C are the areas out, sort of, this is the other side of Rain Street out by the airport, and basically, they were set up as single-wide and double-wide manufacturing home, plus stick build residential laws. That was done before we allowed manufacturing homes in all of our one. So the feeling with the group is that, um, we could just designate those as what we now call low density. Uh, we had a discussion, probably not appropriate if we make a low-density mix, which we need to do transit lodging. But if you go out there, it's very few single wides in 6B and 6A anymore. So the discussion was, and why, we'll get to it later, is is finally agreeing, no single wide in 6B and 6A, make that a true to put a manufacturing home in those, what are currently 6B and 6A, you'd have to be the, what is currently R1, which become RL requirements, so we're gonna be not around the one. So that's a big, not a big change, but it's a good change, sort of help clean up that end of town. We took the duplex, the triplex, the fourplex, and we merged them into medium density and medium density residential mixed. The only difference is, in medium density residential mixed use, transit lodging is a permitted use, and light commercial is a conditional use. So the thought being is if you wanted to have a bodega, a sub shop, or something like that, you could do it as conditional use. And there's very few of these spots in town you would actually have space to do that, when you really look at it, realizing that these are already, are most of them are three out of four, we're not actually intenting to use by allowing that sort of thing. We haven't drawn the lines on the map yet, but we're starting to, when do we see that appropriate? Uh, part of what we're working on today is what was current, what used to be five, uh, I missed six, nine, five, seven, eight, and nine. And we're splitting them into RH, higher-density residential, and high-density residential mixed use. And on the high density, what we've done is we've allowed lots rises to go down, dwelling units to go up, and dwelling unit construction to go up. Uh, we're gonna have a discussion today to sort of finalize our decision to say, no single-family and duplex unless the lots limit you due to constraints such as wetland, and that sort of stuff, and so we've got to have orders to go through that. 6A recreational vehicle and trailer, we're gonna talk about that today, well, the trailer, because I can't remember what we decided on the trailer, we kind of went round and round on that. So if we can come to sort of an opinion on our recommendation on trailers, and then um, 6B and 6C are no longer there, they're all, actually, they've crossmarked into the RL, low-density residential, single-family, retail, commercial, we've established a downtown corridor. And looking ahead, we probably need to designate just call it C1 or something, commercial home, with no residential, and there's a couple of lots we're looking at that have that potential. There's a lot you can't tell anybody about, commercials help to protect it, and then there's a lot, um, across the street from the post office, a little actually, the large, and then there's a lot between um, Sunset Drug and the post office, those are like the last three large plots of land. We could do some sort of commercial mini-ball, let's say Walmart, or something like that in there, so we'll get out and protect those, and we'll go through those one at a time. B2 general commercial, what we'll look at, and then we need to define resort tourists, and then we'll probably get rid of private recreational, because that's gonna cost them. Page 15, starting the high-density base, just using the words from the R5 zone. Please look at 1724020A. All uses permitted in the RL zone only when site restrictions such as environmental considerations do not allow for construction of three-family or larger multifamily dwelling. Then in B, I said two-family dwellings only when site restrictions such as same words, is that sort of what we were looking at?
I think it was, based on our last meeting, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, again, this will have to go through Marshall's lawyers to make sure it's enforceable, because there's gonna be some judgment on. But when you look at the map, most of the undeveloped R5, R6, R7, R9, are R5, 7, 8, 9, a lot of them are in the February, with heavy wetland impingement coming out of oil in there. So the development that's going on right there now is to the point where they are getting setback waivers to build closer to the street, but just jam in a duplex, and that's all they can fit in there, and then like no land around this, you basically step out your back door, you got 10 feet, and you got wetland. So this is, there was a desire of the planning commission to recommend that we sort of try to maintain areas, and it's not the right term, probably is, protected from single-family, sort of protecting them for future higher densities, that's sort of how we describe it, Larry, do you think, is that we're trying to do, say we need to carve some out? When we actually looked at the map, um, it kind of came to us, and I was playing golf yesterday, and saw what going on, there's on the other side of Dolphin, there's like an R5, and they're actually building triplexes in there. So that's temporary, we could look at, the very little, uh, single-family in there right now, that's a potential area we could track, protect for, um, this, uh, R, three-family dwellings or larger, no twos and ones, because those sites wouldn't be environmentally restricted. I don't think nobody would say, it's just looking to carve out anywhere for more affordable rental housing, it's all really trying to do, inappropriate areas where it's going on right now. And I would offer Commissioner Wells to see the famous example of where we've not done well is Ocean Spray Drive off of, uh, I love everybody goes, if you go to Ocean Spray Drive, right off of Ocean Choice Boulevard, that's right before you get to Rainbow, Ocean Spray, you drive up, you go through some really pretty cool weird, uh, four condos, you see a beautiful six-story going up apartment building, and right next to it is a single-family home, and that's all identity. So if we could have just figured out a way to protect that, we could have had a nice little apartment area all the way around Ocean Spray. But already, there's, I think, one or two really nice four or six-plex apartments going up, and right next to us, a single-family home. So we've got this sort of mixture going on throughout. So it's not all the way fighting back on pyramid zoning, but I think it's starting to get through pyramid zoning. Any discussion about these words and continuing down the path?
Are these only row houses? Or are they detached forms, or what can they?
Go where?
In the six, I mean, R5.
Well, it's gonna become RH. Anything going, so in RH, what we said basically was, um, if you subdivide it, because we didn't say subdivision table, if you subdivide it, just 3600 square feet, you can do two, two-family homes. You can divide it, the 1000 square feet, you can do, um, for a single-family, that gives you the same density.
If you don't subdivide it, you have to have one, only one building.
Yeah, then the smallest individual dwelling structure is a threeplex, unless environmental restrictions such as wetlands and all that sort of stuff prevent, physically prevent being able to do a threeplex, and that would come to basically the description of the city player as he walks in and I screw over that. Good timing, Marshall.
I apologize for my tardiness.
And you weren't here for last, what we really talked about was looking at, and you know the map better than us, but we're learning it, is, is very few R5, 6, 7, R5, 7, 8, 9 undeveloped left. Uh, there was a desire among the group to recommend the city council that in certain instances, or most instances, we say, we'd like to preserve, say, no more single-family residential, understanding there may be some issues with that. At the same time, what we said, and you, you don't have the words, you'll get a chance to go through these, we came up with some words that basically say all uses permitted in the RL zone only when site restrictions such as environmental considerations do not allow for construction of three-family or larger multifamily. That would be the very few issue.
Yeah.
Same thing for two-family dwellings. So we said, unless you have environmental considerations restricting development, you can only do the threeplexes above in the RH.
Okay.
That's kind of what we're looking at, and you missed the discussion, but the perfect example is the backside of Dolphin, where we're doing those threeplexes right now.
Right, yep.
We could just designate that, but anybody can take one of the last few lots and do a single-family home, nothing anybody would. I don't, I haven't never seen any single-family home in their current R4, their R3.
Not on that side of the road, but the other side of the road, they put three in last year.
Definitely, so then we'd have to see where the signs are, to keep it on what side of the road, or keep it on both.
Well, the other side is zone R1, so.
There we go, yeah, so it's that strip.
Yeah.
The Commonwealth complexes.
Yeah.
Where we're sort of trying to protect that.
Yep.
As much as we can, there's not many lots left, as it appears. So, any more discussion about what we want to do here? Follow what we're doing, I'm listening in, so, and then, page 16, uh, 1724050. Um, basically, what we've said is, this is the corrections, B is the subdivision short plat and replat. Um, if you want to have a three through nine, you're gonna stay in a full 7,000 square feet. Or if you want to subdivide the 7,200 and la, and half, and do two, two families, that gets four units, and then if you want to go all the way down to 1,800 square feet, you can get one family. Then the word that we agreed to last time, multiple dwelling structures are allowed for establishing lot under the purchase in accordance with the below table, so right now, you can't do multiple residences on a single lot. So what we're saying is, on a 7,000 square foot lot, you can put four dwelling structures in there and not subdivide it. So if you want to rent it, or, uh, short-term rental it, you can take your 7,000 square foot lot, there's not many of them left, and build four single-family housing units in there, or.
Detached.
Detached.
Yeah.
We're gonna get away from this crazy Commonwealth subdivision.
Thank you.
Which is insane, when you look at what some people have done in town to meet that requirement for some Commonwealth subdivision. And a lot of this is driven by Marshall's feedback to the developer community, that's what's really watching out here right now. You know, right, people want.
Yeah, if I could comment on that, um, I had a discussion today with the building official, and the concept of the Commonwealth subdivision structures, um, being a hot commodity, it, it looked like that was going to be a thing at the beginning of last year. And, and so we had a developer, build four of those, I think, and of the four, he's only sold one or two units out of the entire group, which is kind of throwing a little cold water on the whole concept of these are gonna be a hot commodity.
Is the Rainbow watch?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those are tiny too.
Yeah.
They may have gone too small.
Possibly, um, but, you know, the concept is, we're trying to get, get as, you know, I mean, everybody, most of the comments that I get is, how, how many and how small can I build detached structures?
Right.
So what you guys are talking about gets into that narrative that I hear regularly on the phone. I think there's a lot of support for that, uh, so within the, within the development community.
It's gonna be interesting to see how this is treated by council, what we think of the council, it's a drastic change.
Yeah, absolutely, you know.
Drastic change in what we do now, but I thought it was doable. All right, so, listen, I'm gonna run record short on your last meeting, say, well, cool. Um, so basically, I didn't even publish the, um, RHM, because all we do in the RHM is we say, um, everything you do in the RH, you can also do transit lodging, and you can do light commercial, it's the same word we've done in the RL, in the RH. Uh, so if everybody is okay with this, I just want to kind of get a thumbs up, this wording, uh, we can bring it back second meeting in January, because first we just completed a wedding, uh, we might should bring back the RH and the RHM for above, because everybody okay, where we are with that?
Yes.
And you could throw any, it's better than works like you normally do. Don't, don't care, you know, you actually found good stuff, but we didn't have the.
I was struck by what I think is a contradiction, maybe Marshall can explain better to me, but 1750, was it 150 or something like that, erection of more than one principal struck on a lot.
Right, so this would.
This was with the exception of R1.
Right, yeah, because we're talking above R1 too.
Right.
We're talking above R1.
So it's not a contradiction?
No, no.
No.
But we still have to go through all of 17, we, we have created some contradictions in 1750. 17150, we have to say all of those.
I, I'm not following exactly what you said, but just from the, this statement right here, that what, what, it's correct me if I'm wrong, when you're saying that this, what, this high density is replacing R5, R6, 7.
Right, which is not R1.
Right.
So therefore, that's, that's, is that what you're saying is a contradiction, because in R1, it wouldn't be, but this isn't R1, though, this is actually would have been old R5, so.
This basis is, you can, you can erect more than one principal structure on a multifamily zone lot.
Yeah.
And we'll just make sure 150 is clear, but the, but our proposed language does not make anything other than Commonwealth structures legal.
And 150, wait.
No, and then, uh, well, any of them, anything.
No, because we basically said.
Took our row houses and Commonwealth structures.
Yeah, but when we go to 1724050, the we eliminate the common law by saying multiple dwelling structures are allowed for establishing recorded lot.
Well, I thought we should maybe round out that definition at the very beginning of the code, that's all. Very beginning of that purpose on the, uh,
Okay.
Point, point 010.
So maybe some discussion about multiple structures on a single lot.
Yeah, they just say Commonwealth, and
Yeah.
And they don't say anything, probably the Commonwealth, everybody who's.
I think what you're saying, well, we say row houses, we, we kept the old row house. And we say multiple structures.
Yeah, we have a row house definition in the union.
Nice, I don't know, look at city for you, Mike, there's so many weird definitions, like, yeah. Tell you where we're going with all, so if that's the case, and there's sort of a consensus for that, I'll go back and clean up that and the two Ms. as well. That's the same background, just in our end. But you're right, we don't clearly say, I mean, later deeply in it is said, we can do it, but the double R without problem of the purpose today, or the purpose of this is to increase density by all of wealth, construction of a big lot.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Why you're here is, you're smart enough. All right. 6A, vehicle and trailer. Where did we end up with recreational vehicles and single-family trailers? As a, I just want to hear some more discussion, I think we need to hear some more discussion about where we are on that. Because again, we're only talking about 6A.
Has to be as well, I think.
Yeah, it's like that tiny little piece with the tiny, that was supposed to be the RV camp, that became full-time housing.
Over the years. I remember correctly, I don't think we were concerned with it.
But we were, we were leaving the trailers in.
I think we were, I mean, I don't remember much conversation, but I thought it was leaving alone, more or less.
I think that's where we are too. I think what we said was, that's because of the lot size up there, we would recommend to continue and allow. I haven't driven through there in a couple of months, have we seen many park models in there yet?
A few.
A few park models?
Yeah, it's been a while since I've driven through there as well, but, um, it seems like in the last five years, um, I've seen a few of those go in.
And explain to them what a park model is versus a single wide, if you can.
Well, it's one, it, I, I don't know, it's probably specifically by dimension, uh, you know, under a certain square footage or whatever, but it's, it's one that, you know, can be basically trailered in.
But it looks more like a house.
Yeah.
Than a, than a single wide, it's almost like a large tiny hall.
Yeah, that's probably a pretty good analogy.
When you say it's a tiny hall, I think, was that so like?
Yeah, I like the wording, a large tiny hall.
They're often similar with traditional construction techniques. So that's sort of where we're at, so I mean, I just wanted to get absolute concurrence that we sort of want to not touch this. Um, we have some issues on the single wide definition we need to bring in. Um, we'll work on that. And this is the 2,000 square feet, which is the smallest lot size in town right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Would everything in 6A be registered through Department of Land Management? Because since they're all trailers?
No, it is a whole different set.
Yeah, there's two different types of structures in there, and, and that might be the division uh, between a park model and a regular single wide, or, or a smaller single wide, would be, one would be DOT, and the other one would not, would be, uh, Department of Labor and Industries.
Yeah, no, I was thinking of that, we use that as the distinguishing factor, if we wanted to keep it of one way or the other.
No, I, yeah, I haven't heard a lot, I just think we're okay with all three, even travel trailers. Because they're all fifth-wheel, yeah, living travel trailer, fifth-wheel and, and travel trailer.
But that would be under the DOT.
Yeah, both, those are basically, well, basically, well, well.
It sounded like everything was DOT.
Except possibly the park model.
Exactly, right, and we're okay with that in this 6A though?
I think so.
Thanks.
Yeah, part of the discussion we have, I thought we're okay with it.
Yeah.
Any thoughts thrown on that one?
It's a mess.
It's actually not that bad anymore.
It has improved, I think it, you know, for the most part, it's improved over time.
Right.
In certain areas over there.
Yes.
And quite frankly, parts of 6B are worse.
Yeah.
6A.
Yeah.
The Department of License and Ignorance, we'll be putting travel trailers on foundations. The Department of License and Ignorance Division, we'd be putting travel trailers on permanent foundations.
The people that live in there now, just be blocked.
And some of those things are 6B.
Locked up and skirted, yeah.
Yeah, they've been sort of been blocked out and skirted, but.
Didn't, didn't we discuss, uh, last time that, uh, some of the older ones have been upgraded?
Yeah, yeah, these porches, and all sorts of stuff, and sheds, and.
A bunch of add-ons.
Yeah, and this really, and building officials gotta go in there and keep that clean and safe.
Yeah, it's more of a challenge for him than it is on the planning side.
Right. That's what I, that's what I believe, so it's gonna be a bigger issue for him on how to manage to keep that safe. I mean, the good news in 6As, 6B, and 6C zones are, is we're making a clean recommendation to basically get a single wide out of 6B. And our only desire is to see if there's a few left over, but that's sort of the clear unspoken recommendation by saying 6B becomes RL.
Yeah.
And then, in that case, the only thing you can put in there is your manufacturing home, in accordance with our current manufacturing home standards.
24 by 36. 840 some square feet.
Yeah, so it's and so this is, it'll be interesting, we'll consider it. So we sort of are on agreement and consensus on that, so what I'd like to do is, you want to talk some more?
No, no, I was, I was seeing concurrents.
I was gonna, basically, do we want to vote here, or do you want to wait for January to make the votes, all what to do with these three, 6B, 6A, and 6C? What I'd like to do is, I'd like to go back to the 6A right with one more time.
I was gonna say, I think we need to get the definition of it cleaned up a little bit, and you get that.
But can we get, uh, a motion to eliminate 6B and make it part of RL?
Only a motion, don't second it.
I will definitely second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
It'll be our recommendation. All right, can we get a motion to take 6C, which is manufactured double-wide and only, which basically is no change. Six C, which is manufactured double wide and only, which basically is no change. But convert sixty to R L. Do we have a motion to make that conversion? Seconded?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Alright.
So we actually did work today. Alright, and. What I would like, well, it's fresh in my mind, is do a little bit of math work, not a lot today. I'm gonna ask to use your spot right there.
Sure.
And what I'd really like to do is look at some of these RHs.
Yeah.
RH versus RHM. So. Right here is R five. I'm looking here. This is the stretch I talked about.
Um, these are um. Seems to me like there's two du- two or three duplexes that wrap out this this. I don't know if they're all duplexes or if one of them is a single family. I think they're all duplexes.
Okay.
Three altogether.
Three, yeah. No, that's the church, that's the LDS church. Both both sides of the castle, LDS church has it down here.
So basically, what we're gonna stop at, this current R four. Get that green spaces there. Will basically become. RH. Right?
Yeah.
And so in the future, you'd have to build a five plexo, unless it's environmental considerations.
Yes.
Yeah, and this is a golf course pro shop right there, so that's already developed, that's only developed.
And the duplexes when it's still out of place, I mean, they're not.
I'm trying to get my head around this.
That's already developed, um. The church. And so we've got the library is the last one, we've got the the church, they're. Trying to think of that yellow building if it's.
That's like a four pod.
Well, it's a single family, but multiple families are occupying the structure, I believe.
We need to look at this, though.
Yeah.
What to do in here, maybe. Because maybe it goes to some sort of an RM. We allow some people with RM and churches with a waiver. So there's those two we wanted to look at. Just so you're familiar, this is. What we've been talking about. This all. Should be. Would become. And six C, which is really strange, nobody ever saw that as anything but regular residential, so all of this would just become. RM. Yep. Okay. That's the sum across. So down here, we found the Dunsum. We had the scene that we said this is medium density. Um. Overnight rental's not appropriate. What we said here. Was medium density that we didn't talk about. And we still need to transit logic enough. And I didn't get back to that. Um, then here. Why did we separate this? Oh, that's because it's.
Well, that's a fine unit development and it's already basically summed to the equivalent of B one.
B one. That that's.
Yeah.
So what we talked about on all of this. R seven. R eight. Is making this all RH.
With.
RH mixed.
No.
So all of this in here. We said the same thing in here and here. Well, we didn't say that, here's what's going on. Like, we need to look at this again, because there's a ton of single family in here.
Now there is, now there is.
There's a lot of vacant lots in there too, though.
Yeah.
But but what is developed is single family with the exception of a couple.
Yeah. Yeah, the casmirs are over on this side.
Right.
And then they're off on this side.
Yeah, well, Moose Court, I don't know if that was Casimir.
Well, with Moose Court, yeah, well, I felt like whoever that was. And then, so.
And those are for all intensive purposes, those are three. Separate structures, but they were built with with. Subterranean. Yeah.
Cover wall, yeah, I know what happened there. So one solution is. To make this RM. And then make all of this RH.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So no future construction of single families, even though that I saw a single family right there.
Yeah, but it's anything from future. And it allows the residential next in here, which.
Are you proposing um transient in the RH in that area?
I would.
It's right, it's adjacent, it's a budding a B one, which uh or a B two, I don't know what that's ever going to develop as, but.
But our our plan of this, we talked about it like, is making this commercial.
Yep.
No residential at all.
It already is commercial, it's zone B two and and then restricting it to that.
Yeah, making it, yeah, making a new zone that's commercial always.
Right.
Commercial.
We've also looked at, and I know they probably wouldn't object, where am I? Yeah, um. This one, commercial only.
The post office.
Yeah.
And what's her name? And then this one, maybe commercial, we'll see.
Yeah, so the last big areas.
That's it. That's the same one.
Yeah. That's the shop.
Same colors.
Yeah. So we said. This would be RM. You're you, you see where I am? So this would be RMM. Right? And this will be RHM. Because the buy right now. There's one four plexer here. This. We already said RM. And then this, I think we said just RM, oh no, RMM. That's kind of what we've all said, right? And then this area. Lot by lot. This will be like the Navajo checkerboard. If you ever been that far to Mexico. Where they screwed the Navajo, but given them one square mile.
Right.
Not connected, checkered board.
No, that's about as bad as.
This is what this is going to become. So anything that's not currently developed, we're going to ask council to make it protected B two.
Yeah.
This is the last undeveloped B two area in town. Other than someone here. Okay. Thanks, guys. Anybody else? More looking at this? Hopefully by the second meeting in January. We'll get an updated map. Okay.
There's no borders of anything along here.
But but the massive one.
There's quite a bit of upland in that. There there's some high dry ground in there, but there's a significant amount of wetland, but I make all that high ground buffer. Yes, yes.
We could make half of that B two. You'd have plenty of B two area that you don't have in that.
That's a fun about idea.
But the thing about that is B two, which is environmentally sensitive around your least restricted zone.
Yeah.
They they don't kind of go together.
Yeah.
As far as.
Talk to get a permit there.
Yeah, exactly. That's one of those environment.
Activity and they would be almost impossible. Good. So. Do we have any reports?
The only thing I have was the coordinating of biking and walking survey.
Nobody else?
Public communication in the room. Richard, you've got something, and then I have something.
I would like to say that that what I'm hearing, and I did not look at all of the agenda from the agenda. But I can visualize most of it from a year plus ago. And and I like what I'm hearing uh in the way that you are refusing. Uh, that you're making more uh affordable housing available by restricting R one development.
Very certain, but very few areas, but yeah.
Yeah.
Protecting what's left.
Protecting what's left, I like that. Everything that I've heard, uh frankly, I like. And and wherever it's appropriate, it would be good for me, we we define all those RHMs and RRLs and R. And whatever all of those things are.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm recording, so then I can transcribe that and saying, oh, RHH mean.
Yep, and if you, I don't, I I'm taking a record copy of all the changes, so we're creating a definition that we go.
Okay.
So we'll do that. I did, usually I put them over there, but I didn't just. Oh, so I also move that into the back. And the other thing, so. New mayor, I think sometime. March into May, we'd like to get this for to come to for discussion in the book. Just as a presentation. But here we're going, we're way off track.
I I do not represent, I just give voice to the council, but I personally would counsel and. Can see uh my experience, I like what I do here.
Yeah, but I'd like to get some guidance, because we're all. I guess so, but we are. And it's getting people to understand. The increased transit logic opportunities only in areas already high density, not in any existing single barrel. We talked about that's about development, but the natural swap in the resort tourist area. But that's sort of where we're at. Okay. Alright, um.
I think that it's worth it. So six A, would tiny houses be allowed in six A or not?
Yes, by definition, our model.
Alright, it let let as it is right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
In fact. Depending what you call it, tiny hall, you could go into. RM, which is currently anything two family or above. And you could put, we're gonna make, we're gonna reduce the minimum house size. So you could put multiple structures on what is currently R two and above. You could, or a single one. So R two and five vision is. Potentially eliminating drastically reducing the minimum square footage box. It's beautiful, one thousand eight hundred square foot lot. You know, you can't have a. So that's the other thing when we get into the one fifty, we do those metals, that's kind of me. Alright. Vina, do you have anything for the group? Oh, my voice totally disappears.
I don't have any comments, but congratulations. It sounds like you guys are really making some progress there, so keep it up.
Thank you. Keep keep pushing on and we'll, I'm moving some our way.
Thank you.
Good thing, one one thing really, our next meeting date is January ninth, twenty twenty-three, uh we. Okay, so the first meeting. Secretary for the next meeting is Mark, and that's always our strategic planning meeting, where there's no agenda other than strategic planning. So we, I, we ask each member, first we do is elect officers. Then once the officers are elected, in this case, it's the chair and the vice chair, then each member brings, who would like to see us work on in the coming year. That's sort of the definition of our strategic planning, right?
Part of here is the mayor is joining us and giving.
Well, we'll see if the mayor wants to come or members of council, whoever, we're gonna do that. Um, before we adjourn. We all have to recognize Dan, Dan is six years and nine months. On the planning commission, how many of those years is the chair? Four?
Four.
Four is the chair. Um, and Dan suffered through some harder times at the end. Plucked it out and held on and made it all the way to the end of his term, and he thanked him for that and support, so thank you, Dan. Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn? Mark, seconded? I love this process. All in favor?